Enjoy. Momentarily, let's get started. So again, good afternoon, everyone. For the public, my name is Neil Albert and I'm the chairman of the Board of Commissioners. I'm going to call this, I'm calling this meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, April 8, 2020. The time is 1:03 PM. This is the regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Housing Authority being held today, April 8. This meeting is being held via WebEx video conferencing. I'm just going to ask our Commissioner staff, if you're not speaking, please ensure that you place your devices on mute. We can minimize. Like to silence, but as we reflect, let's just remember those who have lost lives or whose lives have been lost to this pandemic. Thank you. I also wanted this time to recognize one of our fellow board members who is putting her life on the line every day, caring for women who have been hit by the COVID-19 virus. Commissioner Franklin St. Jean, who was, as you know, is a nurse and has been faithfully performing her duties every day. She does give me a regular pep talk on text mess about keeping safety precautions. I'm sure she does that many of you, but we really just want to say thank you for the work that you continue to do. I'm going to ask our secretary to determine a quorum at this time.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Neil Jones? Can you hear me?
Yes, present.
Okay, Commissioner Neil Jones. Commissioner Slouver?
Present.
Commissioner Ortiz-Gal. Commissioner Fauchekio. Commissioner Forrester. Commissioner Forrester there. Commissioner St. Jean?
Present.
Commissioner Strickland? Commissioner Talafaro? Commissioner Talafaro there. Commissioner Van Gasterie? I don't hear Van Gasterie. Commissioner Council?
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are. There's Commissioner Van Gasterie. Okay, Commissioner Council, is he there? And Commissioner Albert? Okay, right now you have five members on the line. Hopefully a few will join soon, but we do have a quorum to proceed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, at this time, I'd like us to consider the minutes of the March 11, 2020, and the March 16 Emergency Board Meeting. They were posted through your board books. Are there any comments or any changes at this time?
Neil, I had a quick question about how the minutes are going to be recorded for this meeting?
We have a recorder on. We're recording the meeting itself, Commissioner Slouver, and we also have the court reporter on.
So the output will be the same as what we get monthly? It'll be verbatim?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great question. Are there any other comments? Changes? Questions?
I have a comment. I spoke to you this morning. Thank you again, Neil, for that statement. And I don't have a comment that I emailed you today, well, texted you today about. So her communication strategy on OPAC and ITD. So for myself, so it's just a little quick statement. I have the fiduciary responsibility to families we serve. As a commissioner for the Housing Choice Voucher, I am committed 100%. As a healthcare provider, I am committed 100%. And as a military service member, I am committed 100%. Understand, communication is the key. Without communication, any operation you are trying to succeed will be a failure. In January and beginning of February, I sent out an email pertaining to an event that was supposed to be held on March 18th for the Housing Choice Voucher families and to hear a special guest. It was a lot of timeframe in order for the responsible parties to do their job. DCHA committed themselves to three pillars, integrity, responsibility, and accountability. You're missing one thing is communication. I just, I just want to make sure and be clear, this doesn't happen again. I would like an organizational chart or chain of command so I know the person who was in charge to send out events, et cetera, to adhere to the three pillars, integrity, responsibility, and accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we have Commissioner Talafaro calling me on my cellphone, which means he may be having difficulty getting into the call. So at least if someone can help him with that, I'd appreciate it.
Do we have, I'm sorry, do we have Commissioner Fauchekio on the line?
I just sent him the number. I think he's going to call in.
Okay.
But Commissioner Talafaro is having difficulty getting in.
I already took care of it, Neil. He should be calling shortly.
Okay, great, thank you. So at this time, thank you, Commissioner St. Jean, for your comments. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the March 11 meeting minutes and the March 16 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Van Gasterie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll turn the meeting over to our Executive Director for his report.
Okay, Commissioners, first, I want to say thank you for bearing with us in the use of WebEx for the last set of meetings that we've held. We're moving through this. There are, as I said earlier, some wrong things to get this right and perfect. Our next meeting, as I mentioned yesterday during our Bylaws Committee meeting, probably will enhance our WebEx capabilities to allow for additional public participation throughout the entire meeting in some way, shape, or form. But it is, we are moving it forward. This was just, what we are modeling today was what originally we thought we were modeling throughout the district as a whole. There have been some changes, so we'll modify our approach moving forward to make sure that we can accommodate all your wishes and accommodate the wishes of all the stakeholders and the public in general. So again, thank you for bearing with us. I don't really, I didn't really want to go through the whole entire PowerPoint presentation over again, but this is going to be shown to the public. I did want Jose to throw it up in a shared screen and allow me to make some notes on some major points that we are dealing with right now. So when we began this, thank you, Jose. When we began this process, as I stated about three weeks ago, the big piece was how quickly could we get up and running? And it took some time, about a week and a half to two weeks, to have all of our staff fully accessible via the internet, via equipment. And that was very important. And the ITD of Department worked overtime to get that done. Literally worked overtime, you know, multiple hours per day to try and get everyone up and running. And finally, I think we've come to a point where 90% of our staff, we can honestly say are either considered essential employees that are still coming in to our sites to maintain them or are teleworking. And that's very important for me to point out to everyone. We're still carrying out our mission as a housing authority to provide quality housing. And also now we've taken on a little more to try to figure out ways to be proactive and to help our residents in any way we possibly can during this pandemic. If that means that we have to make direct calls in terms of what we identify in the PowerPoint as wellness calls to residents, we're doing just that through our Resident Services Department, where we're calling residents and especially our seniors directly to ask them whether or not they need anything, how we can be of service, whether or not we can connect them to any stakeholders or other services within the district that will be beneficial, whether it be to deal with food insecurity or health issues or anxiety that they may be having. We're working with them to make sure that they're taken care of. We're constantly communicating, not only with ourselves internally as an organization, but we're also communicating with the residents themselves using social media. We're still, you know, manning our posts at the door, at the various sites each day. And we may leave notes for residents. We may post something on social media. We may make robo calls. We may put something on our website. But we're using every means possible to ensure that residents have information about exactly what's going on with COVID-19. For our, one thing that we have also done, which is somewhat different, we've incorporated a deep cleaning process during the week, at least three times a day at our sites that have common areas. We are doing that. In addition, I mentioned once before, we have closed down all of our community rooms, the community rooms at our senior sites, which do not have vending machines. I have to be very mindful to say the sites that have vending machines, we have not closed those community rooms, but other locations that do not. We've closed those to create and make sure that there is social distancing within our residents. We're also giving them information about what's going on. And in addition to the deep cleaning that we're doing as a PMO staff, we're also doing cleaning, a deep cleaning every weekend at any site that has a common area. We are, and that's part of those sites, which we're having local companies come in and do deep cleaning on the weekends, on Saturday and Sunday. At our headquarters, just last week, we had a deep cleaning here and we'll have another deep cleaning in the future, right before we return to a full workforce. And so I just want to, just, these are some of the PSAs, the Public Service Announcements that we've been posting on our website within our buildings themselves so that residents are aware of what's going on. I have to say that our PSAs are consistent with what is being distributed throughout the district. We are using the EOC process and what they call the, and the DIC, which is a process in which any information that we put out to the public, to our residents, goes through a cycle of approval to ensure that we're being consistent with the information that we're providing so that there's no misnomers, there's no misinformation going out to any of our residents, and we're not leading them in the wrong direction, especially in an area where we're not the experts. So we're relying upon experts at the Department of Health and through HSEMA to make sure that we're providing residents with the proper information each and every day. So these are the PSAs that we're actually using to give information to our residents on how to handle COVID-19 and also, you know, how to deal with social distancing within their communities. One thing we have done at our senior sites, similar to what hospitals have done, and also the assisted living facilities where we've narrowed down the number, well, we've asked people respectfully to narrow down the number of people that come to visit them on a daily basis, meaning that unless it's a home health aide or someone in their family that needs to care for them, we have strongly suggested and stressed that they limit the number of visitors that they have within the building. And that is an attempt to create social distancing for our residents and for their health and safety. Another piece of the puzzle, we've also provided our residents with that information also, along with connecting them to the various locations and stores that will open and service them with special hours. As you can see here, for example, you know, stores open, you know, for, stores are open additional hours for seniors, let's say on Tuesdays and Thursdays at Safeway, between 7:00 and 9:00 AM, just for seniors to be able to go and grab things that they might need. So that's very important for our residents to make sure that we connect them. I mentioned Brothers Huddle is an organization that has been servicing residents at Potomac Gardens, which is very important to us. And having stakeholders like that go a long way because we can't be everywhere at every time, especially when so many things are going on and this landscape is changing each and every day so rapidly by the hour. Stress and anxiety is something that's affecting not only, not only the residents, but also it's affecting my team too. So one thing that we've been talking about, and we do it on an annual basis, have a wellness kickoff where we create a situation where we always talk about physical exercise for our employees to be healthy so that they can live long lives. But now with the pandemic coming about and COVID, and now everyone working in a different environment where we're working from home remotely, which is something that we've never really done before. And also some of our employees, I didn't mention this, but you know, a lot of our employees are at home with their children. So, you know, just think, you know, being home with your children, trying to, you know, work remotely and do homeschooling with them to keep those little guys occupied during the day is very difficult. And I know it can be stressful for a lot of our employees. So the one thing that we are going to do tomorrow is kick off our wellness campaign a little early so that we can talk about not only being physically healthy, but also being mentally healthy. And we'll be able to give our employees opportunities to talk to people if they have their levels of anxiety or give them ideas about meditation or ideas about, you know, well-being in terms of being physically fit. I just wanted to go back to, you know, we're working again remotely. Our maintenance department and our boiler operations department, though, this week I made that decision to rotate them out. Maintenance department, those site workers are coming on site in two teams, Team A and Team B, or Team 1 and 2. What happens is they'll work two weeks. Team 1 will work two weeks and be off for two weeks. Team 2 will come on that third week and work for two weeks, and then they will be off on Week 5, 5 and 6. And we'll keep rotating that until it's such time as we come back to full service. Boiler Ops is just a little bit different because we don't have the same number of employees that work in Boiler Ops. They're rotating out every five days. So one week on, one week off. Again, 90% of our employees are working in some way, shape, or form. One positive thing for employees that necessarily were not able to telework or work remotely or were not essential coming in, some of those employees have actually volunteered to help with the district's collection of unemployment data that's coming in. There were so many claims that are coming in, they needed additional individuals. So we had some employees on our team that have volunteered to work with the, work with the district agency to collect that information, which is something positive. So everyone is doing their part and pitching in. The slogan out there is that we're all in this together, and we definitely are. And I think we have a great team here at DCHA moving these things forward. The Department of OCP, now that's important because, yeah, I know we had projects that were out there. We are keeping some, we're keeping those repair and maintenance projects moving forward for as long as we possibly can. We are encouraging and we have clearly denoted to our contractors that social distancing and CDC requirements are in place. The right protective gear is supposed to be worn at all times, but we also had some capital improvements that needed to be done at some of our properties. And that same holds true for our maintenance department. PPE is required. We're only doing emergency, emergency work orders or work orders that have to be done on the site to prevent anyone from being hurt or harmed. Those are the only work orders that we're doing. But we are collecting information and data on work orders throughout all of the properties. So at such time when we can start entering units, we will be able to do so. Again, back to OCP, though, we are still working on the transformation plan, but we're breaking it down by project. Now, this gives us an opportunity to basically step back, look at the transformation plan, and define exactly how we'd approach each project, each project individually based on sources of funding or lack of funding thereof, if that should happen. Our Housing Choice Voucher Department and our OCP Department have actually been working collaboratively on a concept of doing virtual inspections. That's something that's important. An example will be using FaceTime for one of our inspectors to inspect a unit for a resident of initial movement or an emergency movement under the Housing Choice Voucher Program. In doing that, they use FaceTime. They want the landlord or the property manager walks through the apartment based on the checklist provided by our inspector. And they, at the end of that inspection, the landlord or the property manager will also do a self-certification. The one thing I want to assure you and also assure the public is, even after this is done, a self-certification is done, we're still going to do a quality control effort after we come out of the pandemic. We're going to circle back to units where we did a self-certification or did a virtual inspection to ensure that it was appropriate and adequate because we don't want to miss anything moving forward. Again, we're only doing emergency lease ups or initial lease ups for properties through the Housing Choice Voucher Program. And we also still continue to do relocations for residents who have vouchers that want to relocate from a particular property, but they are not required to do so, it's not mandatory. They have been clearly advised that they have the option to extend their voucher. If that's what they chose, so choose to do so. Also, we've been accepting a lot of recertification, interim recertification for not only public housing, but also for residents of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. That is not a problem for us. We understand that there may be, some of our residents may be out there who have now gone to zero income because of a layoff or some type of furlough. We clearly understand that. We're also, you know, waiving all eviction processes right now in addition to any rent arrears that may occur from not paying your rent during this timeframe. Those are being waived at the same time. So I think we're doing the right thing on behalf of our residents while this goes on. In addition, in working with DHS, we started doing virtual briefings. So that means that instead of having residents come physically sit in front of us or sit in front of residents, we're doing it from a WebEx component like this, whether it be this or something like Zoom or another platform. We're doing those briefings in that manner to make it easy for residents to get information and force to continue to move the process forward. And as you can see, based on 497 inspections being done over the last three weeks, I think that's pretty impressive to be doing it in the manner that we have, you know, working 100% remote on our, remotely with our inspectors. This is just some of the information that we're, that we have out there that we share with our residents where they can use email, phone call, social media to get information about what's going on at DCHA, along with, along with an actual website that keeps people updated. In addition, our call center is still operating. Residents are calling or have the ability to call our call center, leave information, ask questions, and we take, you know, anywhere from 24 to 48 hours, depending upon the issue, to get back to residents. We redirect them to the right department. We have people that are working, answering questions, or directing them to the right agency if it's a COVID-19 related issue. We've been doing, you know, stakeholder engagement throughout the, throughout the whole entire process, especially with the mayor's office and also the city council. That's important. And the city administrator also has been holding various calls. Basically, what we did, what we created our own task force team, and that task force team is dedicated to working with the Emergency Operations Center through the DOH, Department of Health. And that's where we began right there, staffing our individual. Our point person was there on the delivery team.
Commissioner Talafaro.
With Hammer, Hammer Librarians. So we were there participating. We still participate. Now it's more remote where we send in information via the internet, via emails, and also take surveys and updates that way or using technology. You see some of the other organizations that we've been partnering with, advocacy community. We have definitely met, we've met with them twice already during this timeframe to give them an update on exactly where we were based on the number of waivers that we had actually requested from HUD. And I would like to say, although HUD has, to date, HUD has not responded to any of our waiver requests, nor had it responded to any waiver request of any of the other housing authorities in the nation to date. We believe that public and Indian housing, they're preparing some type of document for a list of waivers that'll be afforded to housing authorities, but that has yet to come out. So an example of a waiver would be, as Chelsea mentioned, a waiver for lead-based paint and interim inspections for right now until we get through this epidemic. And then moving over to some other waivers, like waiver of relaxing responsibility for rent, rent collections and different things like that. Also on, you know, office affair hearings, toll, or all those hearings that were supposed to take place in person, we rescheduled those. And if this goes any longer, we'll continue to reschedule them for a future date and time. You see, you do see a couple of industry organizations listed as part of our stakeholder engagement. They've been advocating on behalf of the housing authorities across the country for increased dollars to make up for any shortfalls that agencies may actually be facing. And they've been paramount to trying to get things done. And that leads us to our actual next slide, which is the financial impact of DCHA. That is, it's very prevalent that there has been about $400 million allocated through Congress to HUD for public housing, the public housing, I'm sorry, the Housing Choice Voucher Program. From that, what we estimate is, the way it's calculated right now, if the housing authority just through natural situations were to have a shortfall, we could apply to HUD for what they call a set aside. And that's decided through a formula calculation, shortfall calculation, which would allow for additional funding to come to the housing authority. What we believe is that HUD is going to use that same formula to calculate any situation where a housing authority has a shortfall based on residents declaring zero income, meaning that they've lost their job or their income. They've gone down to zero. So their contribution to rent or lease amount has decreased to zero. That means our HAP number has to increase to cover the full portion of the rent for a particular resident. So what we did was just, in just a real simple way of breaking it down, the example would be if 10% of our residents recertified zero, that means for the month, a monthly normal collection, rent collection of $3.6 million, we would need to get $368,000 from HUD in order to replace the shortfall. And we moved that through 20, 40, 20, 30, and 40% ratios just to give us an idea of where we might hit depending upon rent collection. But the one thing that I do want to note, for not only the federal program, but also for our public housing, and which really replicates the same, the same concept and same formula, is that as of right now, we're really unable to identify how many recertifications that our interim have declared zero and also how much of a shortfall we actually have. Because when this first started, we fell right in the middle of March when most of our rent had been collected for March, March 2020. And now we're in the first of the month in April. So it's a little tough for us to do a true analysis of where we might have a shortfall because we're still in those, the first month, the first few weeks of the month where we collect a lot of our rent. So we'll have a better gauge on what our shortfall might be, estimated shortfall might be for our May board meeting. And that'll give us an idea of what the actual financial impact is to the authority. But again, the way HUD is going to handle it is always going to be based on a formula that they already have set in place. So I don't expect us to get any more than what we, what we are, what our shortfall actually calculates out to be. The overall financial impact right now, as I said, it's very tough. We're in midstream of all of this. We're doing calculations on a daily basis, trying to ensure that any expenses that are related, whether it be personnel-wise or equipment-wise related to COVID-19, we're keeping clear track of. I've asked my staff to make sure that that's done on a weekly basis versus trying to recreate the will, you know, right at the end when we're trying to submit for reimbursement, maybe through the district or any reimbursement opportunity through HUD. So right now, we estimate the total cost between, you know, people working overtime to get us geared up or for public safety working or for equipment needs, whether it be equipment for teleworking, computers, laptops, what have you, hotspots, or if it's for PPE equipment and necessities. And also our deep cleaning efforts at our various sites in addition to the headquarters. That would be included in right now what we believe to be $145,000 that we've spent thus far in excess of what we normally would have. And it's just related to COVID-19. One thing, in closing out, I just want to say that we're working with other stakeholders, the banks, to see whether or not we can do wellness, wellness checks in terms of credit, financial, financial credit for residents to see anyone who falls in a particular situation where they need, as Commissioner Neil Jones mentioned about their use of their stimulus money, if that should come, how to be very good stewards of that funding to make good decisions. And Commissioner Neil Jones, I spoke to Larry Williams, PMO Director and the ORS Director, and what he explained to me was that they had already started doing that, engaging and doing some webinars with some of our residents. So that's something that is already in the works and we're already moving forward. It's just figuring out other ways to engage and get that, make sure the information, that information gets out to our residents, whether it be through some robo calls or some direct contact. And the last piece is, we're also working with DCPS to ensure that connectivity through Comcast or DC Connect, whomever it may be, the children have access to the internet so that they can get their studies done through remote learning. So that's very important. So we're open to all ideas and we're working with everyone. So again, this is a multifaceted type of situation that we're dealing with, unprecedented for me and probably unprecedented for all of you at the same time. So I appreciate your patience. As I said, that we will continue to do our monthly, monthly meeting, a monthly, well, I'm sorry, monthly, but our weekly updates to you as they come about. We've cut them down where they're not as many per week, but it still captures a breadth of exactly what we've been doing with the staff and also with our residents each day. And I can take any questions. And I just, oh, the last part, the morale of the staff, I believe to be pretty, I believe to be... I believe to be in high spirits, actually. We try to do certain things. Some people held, I have to say, a happy hour last week. One department held a virtual happy hour to keep in touch with the social distancing component. We do things with our staff as a group and as an agency. I've been having town hall meetings, talking to everyone directly so that we're all understanding that we're working together, we're all on the same team, and trying to keep each other's spirits up amidst all those things that are going on. And we've even included a lot of conversation with our union representatives, which is positive because I haven't made any steps or any decisions that might impact the staffing without speaking to the union and us coming to an agreement that we thought it would be beneficial and in the best interest of the employees at the same time. So I can take any questions that you may have as a board right now, if that's what your question is.
Before we take questions, before we take questions, I know there are some commissioners that joined us. Alethia, do you want to just call names to see who else is on the phone?
Sure, I can call again. Okay, so so far we have Commissioner Counsel. Commissioner Counsel, you're here now?
I am.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio, did you join us?
Yes, I did.
Okay, Commissioner Fauchekio is now there. Commissioner Talafaro?
I'm here.
Okay, Commissioner Talafaro is on the call. And Commissioner Strickland?
I'm here.
Okay, and Commissioner Forrester?
I'm back on.
Okay, great. So we have 10 members on the call now. The only absent member is Commissioner Ortiz.
Mr. Chair?
He's frozen.
So I know that we are doing this for the first time by WebEx, so we have a little bit of difficulty and delay sometimes. That's recording this. So questions for our executive director?
No questions.
This is Bill Slover. I'd be happy to ask some questions if anybody else wants to. I appreciate the, I appreciate the update very thorough. Sounds like you're doing a lot of really good stuff. I wanted to pinpoint on, sort of hone in on two areas. One is restricted access to some of our buildings. Some of the stuff that I'm seeing in the private sector and multifamily buildings is a real effort to restrict anybody that doesn't live in the building or is there for a very specific reason, i.e. home healthcare aid. And I know you had mentioned that you were requesting that people not have outside guests come to buildings. Can you talk a little more about whether it's practical or feasible from a health perspective and an exposure perspective to if we could increase that? And if not, why?
Well, our intent, Commissioner Slover, is to increase it. It's new and different. So our first step was to strongly encourage, and now we'll move to the next component, probably beginning next week, if not before, to start talking about, you know, stopping people from coming into the building. Now, this will put an effort on the, additional effort to OPS, public safety, to be able to enforce that because we know we're going to get some pushback from individuals trying to enter the building who do not have a reason to be there to care for a loved one or their home healthcare aide. So we have been talking and strategizing with OPS exactly how we're going to handle that because we know that we're going to get some pushback.
Can I ask why you would wait a week? I mean, this, you know, it seems like everything you see in the news, and again, I'm not a healthcare expert, but it would appear that every day is really important in this pandemic in terms of trying to prevent an exposure. And obviously, as contagious as this thing is, it seems like every day is a really important 24 hours. And so I'm just wondering why we haven't gone to that level yet? And why we'd wait another week if we were anticipating going there? Why we wouldn't start that process today?
Well, I've been talking to the chief about exactly how to handle it, Commissioner. So that's one important because it's going to be an enforcement piece that they're going to have to deal with. And I want to make sure he's ready and prepared to do it. So it may not take a week to have him geared up and ready, but I do want to make sure that he understands exactly, and his officers understand exactly what we're going to be asking of him. Because not at, remember, not at every site do we have a sworn officer. So I can expect, we can expect some real pushback from individuals. So I need to make sure that he's ready to do that.
So again, I don't want to push this too hard. It sounds like you're going to keep answering that way, but to me...
No, I'm going to, Commissioner, we're going to do it.
To me, it sounds like if you just make, switch from request to trying to say nobody who doesn't live in the building or has a particular reason to come should not be in the building, enforcement may come later. And it may be that it's going to take a minute to get that enforcement in place. But I think we should make that very clear today. That's our intent. And I'm just saying, increase from what I think you said was ask.
No, no, I said strong, I didn't say ask. I said strongly suggest.
Well, move from strongly suggest to it is a requirement.
Okay, I'll talk to the chief.
I might be, maybe nobody else agrees with me, but I just think that that's an important step for the agency to take from a protection of the people in the building perspective. I just wonder why we haven't done it.
To piggyback on Commissioner Slover, I think I agree with that, but is there a way that we could talk to Department of Health Service?
Talk to who? I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Department of Health Service to ensure that that does happen? You know, of ways how we can, you know, facilitate those areas that we should not have other families come in those apartments, those units?
So, you know, Commissioner, I know back with the hospitals, they're doing, you know, limiting visitors and different things like that. I can tell you, I understand totally what Commissioner, what both of you are saying. No problem. Just trying to work out the logistics because our population is a little bit different in carrying that out. So I want to make sure we do it the right way. Okay?
Yes, sir.
And the second question that I wanted to hit on from your presentation was the impact on our finances. I see you're running projections on 10%, 20%, 30%. As you recall, about three months ago, there was a request from the advocate community to have a moratorium on evictions. And you made an assumption at that point that should we implement something like that, that our rent collection would in essence go down to zero as a result of that. And I think that all of the actions that I think are appropriate, and thank you, John. Thank you to the mayor for putting those protections into place so people don't get evicted during this process. But I fundamentally believe that this agency should be taking...
That was with the council, too.
That we're not going to collect any revenue for the next 30 to 90 days and that we need to be positioning for that and understand where we're going to get our money. And do we have it in reserves? And if we have it in reserves, how are we going to be able to access it? Because I fundamentally believe that we need to be thinking that way today.
And Commissioner Slover, that was with our partners on the council, too. So I want to give them kudos for that.
John, thank you guys so much. I mean, it's really, really important stuff to give people that feeling of safety that they're not going to get evicted from their houses. And I think we should absolutely be doing that. But on the same time, we need to start thinking in terms of those revenue numbers are going to get down to zero. We need to know where we're going to get that money from.
Well, we can take it from, we can definitely take it from reserve, but also, Commissioner Slover, what we projected is the calculation from HUD, that's where we would make up the lost revenue from in terms of rent collection.
With all due respect to HUD and with all due respect to everybody else, the government is putting out trillions and trillions of dollars. I don't think that we can rely on them at this moment in time. I think we need to develop a plan that we can get these, that's why we have these reserves.
Yeah, we wouldn't.
And I would like to see a calculation that says, we have, we've been told many, 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 many times for many, many, many years that we have $60, $70 million worth of reserves accessible. And so what I would like to see is a plan that says, we're not going to get any money from HUD. We're not going to get any money from anybody. And revenue is going to get down to zero.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Slover, this money's been allocated already by Congress to HUD.
I get it. They've allocated hundreds of millions of dollars to hundreds of people. So it would be, it would make me as a board member feel better to understand that our reserves are actually there and going to be accessible should we need them.
Mr. Gary, Mr. Gary, do you want me to answer that question?
No, I have it, Barbara, because we have the money to cover the, we have the reserve money to cover any decrease in rental collection, Commissioner Slover.
Great, then. And that would be great that if you could just show us that, where it's coming from.
Okay.
I think everybody, I personally would feel better.
Okay, no problem. It's not a problem. We can do that.
So Commissioner Slover actually asked a question that I was going to ask. How are we planning financially for the eventualities that will occur as a result of all of your planning for this pandemic? And I think having, and I'm not asking that you do it today, but given the board has detailed a position as possible, particularly if we're going to be dipping into our reserves, how much of our reserves we're going to dip into? And I know you're making some projections on what we'll probably get from HUD. But timing for that coming in, the amount, et cetera, I think will have to be thrown into the account. So we need to know as a board what our financial position would look like in the next month, two months, three months, until the rest of the fiscal year, quite frankly.
I mean, the city has, you know, $600 million, they got a cut. 50,000 people have applied for unemployment in the last couple of weeks. And this is a, this is an economic hardship like I don't think, obviously, the world's never seen. And so I think we need to, again, not to be repetitive, but I think we need to develop a self-sustaining plan, if we can, with our reserves and what we have already in-house and anything else that comes in will be obviously great. But I think at this point, again, we need to develop a plan that at least that we can survive this with our own resources.
Additional questions for the executive director on his report?
Yes, sir. So who are the three contractors that we have that's actually doing the initial cleaning up? On Sunday and Thursday, on the weekends, I believe you said?
Mr., I think Mr. William, Larry, are you on the phone? Do you have the name of the three contractors?
I'm pulling up right now. One is Spectrum, and I'm pulling the other two right at the moment.
Okay, we'll get those two.
And how much, how much are they? Are we actually doing funding? Like, how much are we paying them?
Yes, we have to pay, yes, they have to be paid for their services. Larry will get that dollar amount for you also. But in addition, that's part of our reimbursement request as we keep our expenses on a annual basis. Because the deep cleaning, I felt was necessary. I made the decision that that needed to happen in the common areas because our staff can't do that. Is Lori on that? Is Lori on the, on the, on the call? Because Lori could give you, Lori has the dollar amount, and it's probably in my email of how much it costs us to do our headquarters for deep cleaning over a three-day period, so.
And then for the recertification for Housing Choice Voucher, if a resident or participant needs help, how can we actually help them out of doing that recertification paperwork? Even though it's on hold, but we still need to get the income recertification done.
We can do it. We're trying to figure out a way to do it via the internet or WebEx or something like that, a virtual response from a resident for information. That was something that we were actually waiting for HUD to give us a verification on a waiver because some things have to be done in person by reg. We were hoping that that would be a way, that they would offer us a waiver so we didn't have to do it in person and we could do it via a virtual connection with the resident. But again, we understand the situation, so no one's going to be penalized during this timeframe. And we're trying, and any recertification that is sent to us via email or dropped in our box, we're handling as soon as possible.
Okay, and then with the virtual briefing with DHS, can you explain that, like how we're actually doing that with DHS headquarters?
When you say how are we doing it, we're actually, you know, putting residents and giving residents a WebEx address or Zoom address, and they're dialing it, and they're dialing it just like this. And they're getting that particular briefing straight down based on the agenda that we would use in a normal setting. They're getting all that information from us, and then we're setting up vehicles where we can give them electronic, an opportunity to print out a voucher electronically or what have you. So that's how we're working with those particular clients via the WebEx protocol.
So does their social worker help them, you know, navigate to a unit? Or how does, how's that working with their social worker as well?
Yeah, they're helping them navigate to a unit, and then we're performing the inspection if need be. We'll perform the initial inspection for those particular clients.
Additional questions for our executive director? Thank you, Tyrone. So let's move into our resolutions. We do have two resolutions to address today. The first is Resolution 2001, which would adopt disciplinary discipline procedures for the Board of Commissioners. A description of the resolution has been posted to your board book. I'm going to ask our General Counsel Chelsea Andrews to give us a brief, high-level description of what this resolution would do, and then open it up for questions from the commissioners. Chelsea?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Again, Chelsea Andrews, Senior Executive Vice President and General Counsel. Per the board's request, the General Counsel's office developed and presented some proposed discipline procedures for the board to consider adopting pursuant to your bylaws that actually request that you have or mandate that you have procedures in place in the event that there needs to be disciplinary action taken against any commissioner for official or personal misconduct. We've had a couple of meetings with the Bylaws Committee meeting to discuss what those procedures could look like and have outlined them and attached them to this Resolution 20-01. High level, what the procedures allow for is for the commissioners to determine if a particular commissioner has committed an official misconduct, personal misconduct, or brought an action in bad faith, and allows for multiple forms of discipline. The lowest form being a reprimand, which could occur at any point, for example, during a board meeting if there is an action by a commissioner that the commissioners do not believe rise to the level of a formal discipline, but should at least be acknowledged as not being consistent with the professional nature or the protocols that this board has established. That does not, that's the only recourse that is not a full discipline and does not have a full due process procedure attached to it. The other forms of potential discipline include censure, which is an official statement by the board, directly disciplining the commissioner in a formal manner for some act or actions. The next level would be suspension. The suspension would be one that the commissioners would vote on, the maximum suspension time being potentially three months. Subsequent to that, the next step up would be a removal from office. Censure, suspension, and removal all have an outlined process, procedure outlined that allows for the charged commissioner to be put on notice, for that charged commissioner to have an opportunity for an evidentiary-type hearing that would be facilitated by a moderator of their choice and would allow for the commissioners to meet again after all of the facts have been presented to vote on what form of discipline, if any, would be acceptable. The process does reflect what's required in your current bylaws, which at this time requires any discipline to be determined by the um which at this time requires any discipline to be determined by the full Board. So this particular resolution um would follow and mirror what your bylaws provide uh in regards to that attendance and/or voting requirement for any um Commissioner. Should there be a change in your bylaws? As you all know, there's been um some proposed amendments to your bylaws, um not voted on today, but possibly at another time. Um these procedures will mirror whatever is reflected in your bylaws in regards to attendance and/or voting requirements. Um and so they are attached, they've been uploaded, um they reflect all of the proposed changes from your bylaws committee and I welcome any questions um and/or feedback at this time. Chelsea?
Thank you so much, Chelsea. Um questions for Chelsea, is that, Aquarius, is that you?
I have a question, and my question is for the record. Prior to this resolution, are you saying that there were no disciplinary procedures of this nature?
Yes ma'am, there were no disciplinary procedures. It'll, your bylaws allowed you all to take discipline and that would have um been, we would have had to essentially present some kind of proposed um procedure.
And the reason why I wanted that, that answer to be placed on record, because after the incident with me where can I live? And when I went to be um uh to feel slow, uh to, to feel um slaughtered, um I wanted him to understand that I didn't want DCHJ to handle this matter, that I wanted the matter to either go to United States Attorney Office to call the government and not be placed in the hand of DCHA so that Commissioners can be held accountable with transparency and understanding. So I'm very much in agreement for this. Um and I also think that um when it comes to disciplinary man, uh, uh, there's a disciplinary agreements of removal, that it should take a full Board to do that. A full, because with the situation with me being that the full Board was aware of it, I really appreciated the way the full Board handled it. There was no gossip among the Board, the matter was kept confidential until it played its way out. So our Board knew how to conduct itself in a manner prior to Resolution twenty oh one. So I wanted that to go on record and I'm glad that we're doing that. Hello?
Thank you, thank you very much. Um any other questions or comments for Chelsea? No.
I have a question unless someone else does.
Uh Bill, go ahead.
Um I had two, two observations, uh I'm sorry I didn't pick these up before. Um harassment uh is, is actually a defined term, I believe. Um there's a defined term of what that means um from, in, in perspective of, of this uh document like this, could we get that definition put into here? Because it is a kind of a, a, ar- again arbitrary as to what harassment is. And I think, again, there is a different definition of harassment with respect to this, a process like this. And the other thing that dawned on me uh was there's no um, a lot of this stuff referenced in here, like harassment of, of DCHA staff. How does that work with regards to initiating the process of censure? Since that would have to come from three Board members? How would three Board members be aware of um, or any Board member be aware of a, a Commissioner who might be harassing a member of the staff? I mean, that, that creates a, an issue of how do you solve to that problem through this, through this procedure?
The, oh, uh, great question. So we actually have a policy and procedure in place with our HR office that allows for employees to report any form of harassment and it, and Commissioners are subject to those same policies that include an investigation and a determination on if there was actual harassment. If there was a determination by our investigation that a Commissioner has harassed an employee, then as the General Counsel, I would be advising the Board of this um misconduct and um therefore I would be presenting um to this Board the evidence and/or information and/or recommendation that that Commissioner be considered um to be potentially removed. Um you all have your own standards of conduct, which even though this procedure um doesn't necessarily um speak to it, if you violate any ethics or standard of conduct that is already established, that in of itself could warrant removal. Um and so that is how um that process would go. Um and then in terms of the definition of harassment, the one thing that um I think is important uh in regards to this document is to give you all the flexibility to determine based on the facts what you believe to be one, uh i- if it rises to the level um of harassment and/or any other kind of misconduct. Um the minute we begin to give some, and of course, we could talk about harassment and/or sexual harassment, um but someone might feel as though um one or two instances doesn't rise to the level of taking action, someone else might feel it does and that's why this allows for a um a fair opportunity for you all to do fact-finding and make an assessment based on the um regarding if you think that the behavior um warrants some kind of action.
Can I, can I, can I get a little more clarity on the, on the, on the process of should a Board member be harassing an employee and that process yields a, a recommendation from you that that Board member be removed? How would that, how, how would that, that seems?
So, for example, okay, so what would probably happen if there was a finding, um and this is a, just a sheer hypothetical, if there was a finding that there, that one of our Commissioners um harassed one of our employees? And typically what we do if that should happen is we would send it out for an investigator to do a full investigation. I would have to have probably a special board meeting and/or a closed board meeting with the, with you all um based on my fiduciary obligations to inform you all of this investigation and the report. It is my hope that once you have an investigation and a report, that whoever is listening, the Commissioners, would believe we need to take some action based on this. And based on that uh investigation and/or report, you all can proceed with making a recommendation. It would require still that you have, um that you follow this process and that the Commissioner has an opportunity to respond and have a fair hearing um process or due, due process. But it would be, the investigation would happen on the side of DCHA, presenting that information to you all to determine if you'd like to move forward. If it requires, just like this process, um evidence, documents, witnesses, et cetera, that would include the investigator, that would include any of the documents in supporting evidence um of the action.
Okay, so it sounds like there's a process where the, where, where it, 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 it can take place. That's, that was my main concern, that there was no opportunity um outside of the, through a three Board members, so, all right, I appreciate your answer.
Thank you.
Bill, do you have a second question? I thought you said you had a second question. You don't have to have a second.
Did I ask two questions? I thought, uh, what did I ask? Uh, oh yeah, harassment, yeah, that was my, that was, those are my two questions.
Okay, great. Any other questions on this resolution?
So with the dis- um discipline procedure, we are a full Board, correct?
Yes, with the current process, it reflects and mirrors your bylaws, which require a full Board determination on um any type of um determination of misconduct. Instead of writing full Board um verbatim in this policy, it now indicates that it will reflect what's in your bylaws. Your current bylaws require a full Board. There's also an amendment that you all are reviewing, has not been passed and is not currently on the table for vote, that would potentially change whatever that requirement is.
Thank you.
But right now, we will only vote on the words full Board with this resolution, correct? That's a yes or no? Chelsea?
The, the, the word full Board isn't in the resolution, but it, it, it references our bylaws, which has the word full Board in it. So, for, in essence, yes. Any other questions for Chelsea? All right, hearing non-utter, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty oh one. Is there, is there such a motion?
Motion.
It's motion and seconded, who, who motioned first and who seconded? I found it in Franklin. Okay, Lawan and then Franklin. Uh rule call, Alicia.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Neil Jones? Uh Commissioner Council?
Yes.
Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yep.
Commissioner Forrester?
Yes.
Commissioner St. Jean? Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Commissioner Talafaro? Commissioner Talafaro, are you there? Okay, Commissioner Slover?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Gostrey?
Yes.
Chairman Albert?
Yes.
You have nine yes, the resolution is approved.
Thank you so much. Uh next on your agenda is Resolution twenty oh seven, which will authorize infrastructure demolition loan finan- financing for Kennerworth Court's redevelopment. Uh Executive Director, please give us an overview and then we'll see if there are any questions that Commissioners have. Is our Executive Director still with us?
Sorry, I apologize, I was on mute, I apologize. Um, um this is, uh Commissioners, this is the opportunity for the Housing Authority to move forward with the Kennerworth um redevelopment process and for Phase One, um which would allow for the development of a hundred and sixty-six units. Um what will take place is that um we will receive a grant um from DMPED. Um in turn, we will loan this four million dollars to the project um for demolition and infrastructure work um to begin on Phase One of, of Kennerworth. Uh the idea, again, is to keep these projects that we, this particular project moving forward um with the anticipation of closing, um a full financial closing um before the end of the year. I can take any questions and I have um representatives from OCP, Darrell Davis, um available for any of your observations or concerns.
Yeah, so I mean, start off, run a question in, uh, on this one, uh, so thanks a lot, uh, for that. So you said it's four million dollars coming from DMPED?
Yes, sir.
Attached to that four million dollars?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, you, you, you faded out, I didn't hear the full question.
What are the conditions, if any, attached to the four million dollar grant uh from DMPED?
Uh, well, it ha- has to be executed, I mean, the, the work actually has to be done, so um I, I think that was, that would be.
Well, it is, I did, this, in timeframe, if it's not in timeframe, it's allowed to be re-
Right, Darrell.
With the requirements that DMPED is, is uh has on the grant.
Darrell, do we have the, is that part of the um, the actual loan document?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing his question, can you repeat it, please?
Um, um, project timeline, completion, project completion timeline, um is that part of the, the actual contract with?
I don't believe the completion timeline is actually in the MOU. Um it is uh likely attached as an attachment, Andre, are you on the call?
Yes, I am, um, that is correct, there's a timeline atta- as an attachment, MOU.
So Andre, do we have to use this money within a particular timeframe?
It states in the MOU a particular timeline and we haven't executed the MOU, so we can put that timeline in there. Also a provision in there as well to um, to renew um that timeline as well as conditions change.
Okay. Uh other Commissioners, questions from other Commissioners?
I have a question, this is uh Commissioner Strickland. Uh I know Dim Cough, uh, Commissioner Fauchekio, how you doing? Um he's on the phone, is there, I, I, I really want to know, is there, is there a chance that these funds be delayed um due to our current crisis or is it a guaranteed thing that it's going to come over once we uh, we approve this?
Do you want me to answer? Is that questions to us or Fauchekio?
Uh to, to, to Commissioner Fauchekio, well, Deputy Mayor Fauchekio.
Yeah, so I, so what we see is that um, um, as we think about like essential businesses, I think that's what your, what your question relates to. Essential business is that construction uh continues to be uh an essential business. And one of the things we are um pushing is for uh, you know, projects to continue to try to do their underwriting uh and their um everything they have to do with the bank. So for us, really, this is important because it allows the work to uh commence uh and uh it's important to us because we don't know when capital markets in the long term will- sorry, uh, one, uh, projects- sorry, getting some interference there, but uh we don't know if capital markets will lock up. Uh so the important thing is with this action today, we actually would see uh progress at the site, uh which I know everybody wants to see. Um so definitely appreciate uh Commissioners supporting uh this. Sorry, I know I was getting broken up as people are joining and leaving, I think, the meeting.
Question.
Go ahead, Van Gostrey.
I have a question, my question is, what is the status of the May thirteen, twenty fifteen pre-development loan? Hello?
Uh, we, we hear you Commissioner Van Gostrey, I would have to, Andre, do you have the status of the expenditures on that?
Uh I could prevent, I could provide a detail of um those funds, but we've currently almost exhausted those funds.
So we can- I was just going to say Commissioner Van Gostrey, you can provide a drawdown, um a list of the drawdowns on that and the work that it, that was done or done with that parti- particular funding. And you said from twenty fifteen, Commissioner Van Gostrey?
Yeah, it was on May twenty, uh, yeah, May thirteen, twenty fifteen is when we adopted the resolution to authorize the pre-development loan. I wanted to know, to me, it, it'd be useful if you always tell us what'd be the status of the previous dollars that has been spent.
Okay.
Where we at on that? And then it was another question I had and it was in reference to I want to say the developer, the partnership between Michael's Development Company. So did Michael's and Warrington, did they hire any DCHA residents? Hello?
No.
No, that hasn't happened yet, but we are uh planning to hire a- at the very least uh twenty-five Section Three workers throughout the construction of the project. And, and we're, we're starting some of our preliminary discussions with the Residents to get them ready and we'll continue to do that um as the project progresses.
Any other questions from any other Commissioners?
Yes, so how many um increase of affordable units at Kennerworth?
Andre, can you answer that one?
In- increase?
Yes. Are you doing one-to-one replacement, what are we doing?
Yeah, we're doing replacement units, Commissioner.
So how much units for the Phase One?
Hundred and-
I can pull that up briefly.
There are a total of uh-
One, hundred and one.
Yeah, those are a hundred and one ACC units, but a total of a hundred and eighteen placement units in Phase One.
And none are homeownership, correct?
No, not in Phase One, but we do have homeownership as part of the overall redevelopment. Um we have approximately forty-two- Um, we have approximately 42, uh, units that can be, uh, provided for homeownership for this project, only under the PUD that we have.
All right, so walk me through, so if, if this resolution go through today and says yes, what is the next step at Kennerworth?
We would begin, um, construction on the infrastructure, that would be the very next step.
What would be the timeline for that?
Andre, do you know how many?
What she wants to know.
Got you. Andre, do you know when, um, how long after this is executed would, uh, infrastructure work actually begin? Do we have that date?
Our, our first, uh, uh, line of work would be to start with some of the demolition activities, which would first start with, um, some abatement, um, of the existing units before we actually do demolition. Um, it's required that we receive, uh, raise permits, and as part of receiving raise permits, we have to cut and cap the utilities, uh, at the, um, property line. And, uh, we haven't started those activities, but it's part of the overall demolition, um, activities. And we would like to, uh, begin those actions, um, starting in, um, the, the month of May. But actually, some of the abatement work would actually begin, um, uh, sooner if, if possible, but most likely it'll be early May.
Okay. I have one last, I have one, I have one last question, and it's like trying to follow. For the record.
Were you finished, Franceline?
Oh, would you, was she?
Yeah, I was done, it's okay.
Okay, great.
DCHA with their Move to Work Local Blend Subsidy Initiative, explain how did that impact Kennerworth residents? And how does it interact with the local rent supplement program for the 48 unit? And is the 48 units going to be the units that's going to be the tax credit units only? Hello?
I'm not, Andre, do you know, I'm not sure I understand the question.
To the last page of the resolution, it is telling you that you're using the, uh, DCHA Work Local Blend Subsidy Initiative. What is it, what is it being used, how is it impacting?
Got it, got it.
Okay, then from there, you're also talking about the local rent supplement program, which impacts 48 units. So is that tax credit only for the 48 unit count, is all that money flow working? Give me a money formula.
So, we're using different subsidy sources to subsidize, I mean, this is common on almost all affordable projects, is you have a certain unit count that you're trying to get to. So different subsidies come in to subsidize different units until you get to your full count. So we have a number of units that are being, uh, funded by LRSP, we have a number of, I mean, all of the units are being, uh, essentially funded by tax credit. That makes up a portion of it. So part of it will be, uh, I mean, our local blended subsidy is our agency resources that are essentially used, um, as project-based vouchers, for lack of a better word, um, they're not from our project-based voucher count, so let's be clear about that. But essentially, we're using our MTW authority to create sort of an artificial voucher to support that project. So those are how all those sources go in, if you want an exact unit count and which subsidies are, uh, going into which units, we can provide that. I don't know if Andre has that information at his fingertips, we can certainly provide you a breakdown of which units would be funded by which subsidy.
Okay, I would like to see, I think the commissioners would like to see that.
Okay, Andre, can you, um, pull that up and send that to the ED's office to, to share with the board?
Yes, I can.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Council. My question, um, will, are we, will we, or have we, since Tyrone's been here, do we, within all of the deals that we're starting to do, are we adding an incentive to the, the, um, the deal as far as them, we have, we have a start date and a finish date, but if they finish earlier, is there an incentive to the package? Or we're not adding anything like that?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you say that one more time, please?
No, 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 Commissioner Council, we're not, we're not adding any incentive to, to completing, completing early. On that.
Okay. Okay.
Just, um, thanks to my colleagues, I just pulled up the information, the, to Commissioner Van Gasteri's question. Um, 48 units will be unsubsidized low-income housing tax credit units that will be rent restricted to 50% AMI. 101 public housing replacement units will be subsidized by DCHA through a blend of 78, um, project-based vouchers, PBVs, and the ACC. That's our, um, blend using the, uh, our MTW authority, um, or local blended subsidy, um, to increase the leverage capital and will be rent restricted, those, those units will also be rent restricted at 50% AMI. 17 public housing replacement units will be reserved as permanent supportive housing units, subsidized by project-based local rent subsidy, or LRSP. Um, and those units are restricted to households at or below 30% AMI. And I know that's a lot to remember, so we will send that out to you, so you'll have it, but those are the, that's the breakdown of the units and how they're funded.
So are we going from zero to 50% AMI, or are we at 50% AMI?
Well, any unit can be, that's, that's the upper limit, that when we, when we give you those numbers, those are the upper limit. So a, a, a household below that threshold can occupy that unit, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's a good question.
Any question? Yeah, Bill, go right ahead.
A couple of questions, can, can you, uh, define what, um, infrastructure, uh, work would be outside of demolition?
That would also include some of your civil work, which would include some of the new streets, uh, new stormwater, um, uh, new sidewalks, curb and gutter, uh, that type of work.
Now, would all that work be on the private part of the, of the site, or the public part?
Typically, infrastructure work that is built to the project is onsite work. Um, in the district, there are, there are more exceptions to that than I've seen in other places, but, uh, usually when the, usually the infrastructure work that is paid for as part of the tax credit deal is often, I mean, is almost always, um, was it more often than not, um, part of the site. If you wanted a breakdown of that, we have to go through the actual scope of work. Um, but I think Berry Farm is the only exception to that that I'm aware of. Uh, I don't know if Andre has any more information on that, but, um, usually that includes onsite work that is part of the public infrastructure.
Okay. These are all questions driven by what's happened in the last month. Um, so, as I understand from this deal, the structure is that the Housing Authority owns 33 and a third percent? Or is a 33 and a third percent partner? Uh, the Michael Companies, 33 and a third, and then Warrington Group, 33 and a third? Is that right?
Correct.
And the loan, has the joint venture been created between those three entities?
A joint venture is being created if it's not complete already.
And the loan would be going to?
To the entity.
The not-yet-formed entity.
And I'll correct you if I'm wrong here.
No, you're correct.
Okay, and so, has anybody checked the, the financial capacity of Michael Company and Warrington Group to, to perform on their obligation of the, um, you know, it was described to me last time I went down this road with you guys, that the reason that they were getting 66 and two-thirds percent of the deal was that they're putting up the guarantees for the project. Are they, have we checked whether they can still put those guarantees up? And where I'm going with this, is I'm concerned that because these, these, uh, these infrastructure improvements are going to be owned by a partnership, that we don't know, we, we may or may not know the, 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 uh, financial strength of that partnership, given what's happened in the last couple of weeks. I, I would be concerned about loaning money to that partnership.
Okay, so I hope.
Better understanding.
Yes, uh, and I'll let Director Garrett add to this if he wants to, but, uh, a couple of things in that regard is that these deals move forward, there is a, um, there is a tax credit syndicator and, um, uh, there, there are several banks involved, and there is a very intense underwriting process, um, not just by us, um, who have our own, uh, set of expertise in regards to finances. But I think, um, uh, more importantly than that, you have DCHFA, you have the banks, you have the syndicators, who all have, who all probably have more experience than we do at underwriting businesses and their operations. So as the deal moves forward, the project will continue to go through those underwriting processes to, um, uh, before work is performed. Now, ultimately, I think you have to remember that this is money that is being drawn down after, um, uh, after the work has been completed and after, um, the invoices have been submitted to us, so we're.
I, I, I don't want to interrupt, I fully understand that part, I fully understand that part, so I get that part. My concern is, A, I heard someone say that we're going to start working in May, so that's kind of a disconnect between all that underwriting that has to go on in May, and ultimately, the partnership, should the partnership falter, they're going to own those, those were, those things are going to be owned by the partnership. Those improvements, because they're not on the public infrastructure, they're going to be owned by a partnership that, that, and I, I get the underwriting, but I mean, we've got to really start paying attention to sort of what's happened in the last couple of weeks and, and the last month, and understanding that all of our assumptions from before need to be, need to be retested.
So, and, and Andre may be able to speak to this more than me, but if there are, um, defaults under the partnership agreement, I, I, I'm, uh, there are typically provisions where the agency would essentially take over that partnership, is that, I think Andre could, might be able to speak better to that than I can.
So what I'd like to add is, on the timing, the demolition is what's going to happen soon. There's going to be a financial closing, and so most of the other work won't happen till the financial closing. We're not conveying via any ground lease until the financial closing. So some of those underwriting questions, um, the money will be there, but for the infrastructure, uh, the work will happen, you know, after financial closing, and we're not conveying until financial closing.
Very good point, very good point, and the demolition has to be done anyway, so the worst case scenario at this point is we would be left with a vacant site, which is what we wanted.
That makes more sense, I mean, I get that, I mean, I, I, I get that, um.
And the, actually, the worst case is having uninhabited buildings up, just sitting there.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with all that, John, I'm just trying to make sure we don't end up lending money into a partnership that's going to falter, and then we're locked out.
Amen. No, I, I agree, I definitely appreciate it, um, but I just wanted to be clear that what this, uh, resource is for is to actually take down those buildings that have been standing too long, uh, vacant.
Just a quick question, have all our families found units that were from Kennerworth?
Commissioner, um, Commissioner St. Jean, there's one family that, um, we're still trying to place, actually, that has not identified a unit. Um, it's not from a lack of the Housing Authority presenting units or that resident, she's turned down 20, basically almost 20 units already. So, and we've identified two other public housing units that she should be able to move into.
Okay, great, thank you.
She was originally, I'm sorry, she was originally trying to use a voucher, um, she, every place she looked at, it, it didn't meet her, meet her standards or, or, or something or other. So now we're, we're moving her into a public housing unit.
But how long does she have on that voucher, because I know it's like a 90-day?
We were given, we were given extensions, we were, we were.
Okay, thank you.
Working with everyone as best as we possibly could.
Could there be a way to, to, um, I, I, I don't, I hate beating this thing to death, but, um, could there be a way to end of the resolution that, you know, the, the, the $4 million, if we approved it, that the, the intent would be that the money would be, the initial drawdown would be for demolition and, and almost like a, a third party, uh, we'd be paying for them to demo our site for us, because we don't have a partnership yet and we haven't had a financial closing? And that the, all, all the other proceeds would have to wait until there was a financial closing and a partnership in place, that, that would make me feel a little bit better, like the money was more targeted and defined and protected. Sorry, John, for creating some, so many hurdles, but I just, I get your point, I'd love to see those buildings demoed. I would just feel better if it were in writing that that was, that was what was going to happen.
Well, isn't that, and Commissioner, let me ask this too, uh, building on your question, is, isn't that why we would have a scheduled performance?
I understand that, but I.
Yeah.
So my, my concern always on this board, John, since I've been here for a decade, is that we get ahead of ourselves? And that we never really, really defined to the board exactly what we're doing, and so just to blanket giveaway $4 million without understanding that there is that schedule and it's not in the resolution and it's nowhere, always, always causes me concern. And having been on this board a long time and had, and seen things that aren't done, the way they're projected or suggested they were going to be done, has, that, that, that's why I have, that's why I ask these questions.
Yeah, and I, I'm just asking if I could join your inquiry by saying, how does the scheduled performance guarantee to what you're raising, that the money doesn't go out and then the work then, or when the money goes out, but the work gets done? So can, can, uh, Executive Director, can you direct that question?
Sorry, you, you broke up a little bit, Commissioner Falchekio.
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, I was just saying, can you, I, I'm actually building on Commissioner Slover's question in that the scheduled performance will be put in place to make sure that the dollars that we're, uh, making available today would be used and not just that pending, uh, closing, a later closing, right? So what's, what's the assurance you could give to Commissioner Slover here to make sure that the work will actually commence?
Um, I would have to defer, I, I hate to put it on, um, OGC, but, um.
No, no, that's okay, I'm just, yeah.
Andre, could, Andre, what could we put in, could, is there something we could put in right now, um, based on our, our MOU with DMPED that would allow for specific performance? Because that's what we're, that's basically what we're driving for, what, what, what seems to be, um, Commissioner Slover's driving for now.
So I just also was asking.
And even if we, and, and even if we adopt Commissioner Slover's language, shouldn't that be language you put in the loan document rather than in a, in a, in a, in a resolution?
That's where I was, that, well, that's where I was going, Commissioner, um, Mr. Chair, that's why I asked on, on whether or not we, that's, you know, would it be a resolution, would be other, some, some other form, um, that we would create?
And what I'm asking, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what I'm asking is, so that we don't have to have these conversations in the future, that you present this kind of detail to us upfront, so that we can read it and understand it. And so that, yes, this would ultimately become part of the loan document, very specifically how these monies are going to be spent and how, who, who's going to own the improvements? I mean, in my, in my world, I've been burned a few times where we got ahead of ourselves and we, we deployed money and things went sour and we lost those monies through the improvements because we weren't papered correctly. And in an environment like that, these types of things can happen.
I, I hear you, but, I, I mean, that's why there is a schedule of performance, uh, that's part of the documents that will be executed. That's why there are loan documents that will be executed, I don't know that there is an easy way to not encumber this resolution, uh, with language that belongs in some other document. I hear your intent and I support your intent, I'm just trying to understand, you're tired and what's the right vehicle to achieve that, that, that intent?
I don't understand if, I don't understand encumbered, if we're just describing what's actually going to happen, how is that encumbering anything?
Right, but, but, I, I mean, what you're asking for seems like a real detailed schedule of draws, uh, and actions that need to occur before money is dispersed, and I'm, I'm saying that, that gets done. that gets done in a loan document rather than in a resolution.
No, 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 I think you misheard me, what I said was, I would like to see if, if, if the intent is the money gets out the door in May is for demolition and we have to demo the site anyway, and should this partnership go not perform and go sour, that we have a clean site, that's a great result, right? Beyond that, what I wanted to see was, no money is going to go out the door until this underwriting is done, the partnership's done, everything's done, so that we know that this partnership, at least that they, that, that, the ink dries, is still intact.
I would just like to add, if there's further work done on infrastructure, we still will not convey the land until financial closing, so we might have demolition and infrastructure, I need to ask Andre, um, but we still own the land. You follow me? So I hear your point, you don't want there to be work done on something we don't own. If the deal never happens, we will still own the land. I'm just trying to make sure, and I'm asking Andre, will there be other work besides demo before financial closing? But I am saying, we will not convey until financial closing. So if you have infrastructure plus demo, we still own the land.
Majority of the work that's going to happen prior to a financial closing will be demolition. Uh, the contractor just wanted to take advantage to put in any type of storm of water, um, works in the ground if they have a site at that time, um, but it's most chances that most of the work that'll be in place will be demolition, uh, related.
As long as, as long as we own whatever the improvements are, then that's fine.
We're not conveying ground lease until financial closing. Well, they're doing work on our land.
Just to, I'm not trying to belabor this, but in, in what Commissioner, um, Slaver just said, in our template that we will be presenting in, in April, I'm, I'm sorry, April, in, in May, well, yeah, it is actually April for the Dev Mod, will that be able to incorporate what Commissioner Slaver is saying, we'll, we'll have to make some changes to it? Can we show that component to answer that question upfront for everyone?
Say that again, Director?
No, I'm just saying, in the template that we're trying to use to show commissioners how the deals are, are put together and how they're structured, is there any way to include that?
So that, the, we can do our best, the issue is that we would need to understand the exact order of the work that's occurring. And that's a little bit outside of our, that's some very technical stuff, and I mean, we can get Alex's people to look at it and summarize it as best as possible. It certainly adds an extra step, um, because that, that is, that's, it's very technical to separate and say only demolition, because once you've got your crews out there and you've got that ground opened up, that's usually when they go ahead and they do certain work that'll make future work advantageous, so.
So they don't have to mobilize again, I, I got, right, so I, I'm just trying to figure out a way to answer. I'm just trying to figure out a way to make sure that when we come up against this again, we have all the questions for, um, Commissioner Slaver answered upfront.
Absolutely.
And for the board as a whole, so.
So, when, when I submit my, um, next draft to you, I'll put whatever I can think of in there and you can let me know whether it's sufficient.
Okay.
Uh, Bill, anything else?
I'm good, thank you for, thank you for the answers.
Uh, any other commissioners? Great, so I am going to request, uh, a motion to approve Resolution 2004, is there a motion?
Motion.
Twenty oh seven, sorry, it's motion, by, is that Francis Lee?
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, can we have a roll call?
Yes, thank you, uh, Commissioner Talafaro?
Yes.
Commissioner Falchekio?
Yes.
Commissioner Neil Jones? Commissioner Neil Jones there? Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Commissioner St. Jean?
Yes.
Commissioner Forrester? Commissioner Forrester there? Commissioner Council?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Gostrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Slaver?
Yes.
Chairman Albert?
Yes.
You have nine yes, the resolution is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners. This will be the time in our normal, uh, meeting where we will have public comment. Uh, I know we requested, uh, the public sending comment in advance. Alicia, have we received any comments that we can share, uh, with the board at this time?
No, we have not see, received any advance comment.
I had, uh, I forwarded something to, uh, Lisa that, um, Daniel from Empire DC had sent in, I understand it was after the, after the window had closed, I don't think they're aware of that, but I forwarded it to him, hopefully we can get it into the record.
Yes, do you have it, uh, Alicia, and can you read it into the record?
I'm looking for it now, did you send it to me today, Commissioner Slaver?
Yeah, you know, the internet's, uh,
Bill, if you have it, can you read it into the record?
Oh, here it is, it didn't go out, sorry, my bad, um, let me think, it's, uh, I'll do it real quick, uh, are there any updates on the Berry Farm redevelopment? If anything moves forward during the COVID nineteen, uh, stay-at-home related to redevelopment, how will the EFTAA and residents be involved? Uh, have any historical designated buildings been secured, if not, which ones remain to be secured? Uh, does DCHA have a vision plan for historical designation buildings, if so, how can Berry Farm residents be involved? How will COVID nineteen affect DCHA's transformation plans? Will any demo disco applications be put forth in 2020? Um, how has DCHA been communicating with its public housing residents and voucher holders? Has it been solely via email and internet? Um, I don't know if you want me to slow down, do you want to answer these, or how do you want to handle this?
Well, I was hoping that, I was hoping that the Executive Director can get a copy of it and send a written response, uh, to, uh, I think you, I think you said, I think you said Daniel is the one who sent it in?
And then you can put the written response on the internet.
Yeah.
Why don't I go ahead and do that? I'll, I'll try, I'm not sure why this, this won't connect to it, let me do it off my phone.
Yeah. Great, so what we'll do is, Alicia and, uh, Tyrone, if we can just enter it into the record uh, and enter any response that you are providing into the record also.
Yes, we'll do that.
Great. Is there any other business to come before this body today?
Yes. Okay, so this is Commissioner, um, St. Jean, so on the oversight hearing, I just want to kind of like ask a question in where are we at right now? The crediting, the credit building pilot in the 2018 Edition of Columbia Council proposed a pass bill called the Public Housing Credit Building Pilot Program Act of 2018, and it became effective August twenty, sec, twenty-two, tw- twenty-eighteen, the stature established a pilot program that gives DCHA public housing residents the opportunity to opt into, I'm so sorry, so where are we at with the pre-elimination, implementation, post-implementation for the council? The council fully funded this program.
Yeah, but I don't think the, the, the funding hasn't transferred over, um, is Hammer on the line? Commissioner, Commissioner St. Jean, allow me the opportunity, because I, the funding hasn't transferred over for us in, in, to, to implement the program yet, so um, we're at the initial, very initial stages, so I can get you, um, updated report on that, but as I presented at the oversight, um, we haven't, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
But I'll get you, I'll, I'll go back over it again with, um, and I'll grab Hammer, um, and we'll get you a detailed report, and if we, if we possibly can, we'll give you a, a rollout of what the timeline actually looks like for the end of 2020.
All right, great, and then, um, two other questions that I have as well. So did we put a freeze on, um, for hired and a preference? Did we put a freeze, because I know we're supposed to be saving some spending? Did we put a freeze on hiring?
Well, we didn't put a freeze on hiring, we ha, we're hiring, um, where we need employees and where we have a void. Uh, we did not put an official freeze on the organization, no.
Not, so, but we're spending money that we don't have, and so explain that to me, because
We're not spending, no, we're not spending money that we don't have, because we, we, many individuals went out on VSIP, okay? So then that opened up, uh, an opportunity for us. So in certain positions where we did not have to replace an individual, um, we did not, so, um, but in certain instances, we might have had the need for a particular position that had a, that had a void for us, um, that we would need to fill. So not every position, um, did we go out and back, we didn't backfill, and I, I think that really goes to, to your question. We didn't backfill every single position that was vacated, um, through the VSIP or an individual leaving.
So is it, sorry.
And we're also, and we're also, you know, in the midst of our workforce assessment, um, right now, so that's during the sta, that's, that staffing assessment that we were, um, in the midst of before COVID nineteen hit, so.
Okay, and so where are we with the audit for, um, the Housing Choice Voucher?
Um, that's not completed yet, I think we were, we were in the process of it. Um, COVID nineteen has hit, because now we can't do the in-person, we can't have the consultant, um, the auditor come in and look at everything internally. Um, so that'll revamp, once we get back to, um, to the office. Um, anything that can be done remotely, um, we'll supply the auditor with, um, to go over it. But I also do know that we did do another assessment of the submarkets, um, and, and we were making the necessary adjustments, and we can present that to the next audit and compliance, the audit committee, um, with the findings of that.
All right, on the waiting list, um, did we kind of scrub the waiting list, like far as calling people to make sure their information is updated?
We're doing, we
When was the last time we did that?
Uh, I can't, off the top of my head, Commissioner, I can't tell you the last time that we did that, but I do know that PMO actually was looking at the waiting list, um, to identify individuals that might, um, qualify for, um, one bedroom, uh, not one bedroom, but, but efficiency units. Um, so we're actually, we're always looking at our, at our list, um, and resident, and so the next prescribed scrub or purge probably won't be until the end of the year.
All right, and how many, um, vacant units we have in public housing?
Off the top of my head, I, I can't, I can't, I can't tell you off the top of my head, I think, I, I don't want to give you the wrong number.
How do I have these answers, I'm just joking.
I, I think, you know, roughly, um, I'm not going to give you an answer, but I, I think, and within, but I do know within the fourteen properties, um, we have approximately four hundred and sixty-three vacant units within the fourteen, um, that are part, part of the transformation plan.
The only reason I said that is because of the waiting lists?
Right, the first fourteen, of the fir, I know, I know off the top of my head, of the first fourteen, approximately four hundred and sixty-three of that, that that first fourteen properties that we're talking about within the transformation plan, within the next, um, revitalization, within the next seven to ten years, we have four hundred and six, four hundred and sixty-three vacant units within that, uh, set of the portfolio.
Okay, and one last question, so about that homeownership contribution that we did for eleven thirty-three, the, I guess, the one million dollar, where are we to do this initiative for other, um, for other developers that could give us funding for that homeownership fund?
Well, Commissioner, we haven't negotiated any new transactions yet, so there are no new redevelopment deals, um, that we have started negotiating with developers on, so um, for instance, that was a, a, a transaction that was, had the, we had the ability to put that into place, so if we put out a new R, example would be, if we put out a RFP and we select a developer, that's something that we would negotiate with that developer, um, during that, during that timeframe.
So what I'm saying is, that's supposed to be
But, no, but that, but Commissioner St. Jean, just think, that's if, we're talking about, that's if a, a, a development partner, um, isn't able to create a way to have the homeownership within the, the site plan itself, so, you know, everything, every redevelopment, um, opportunity is going to be totally different for us, so not everyone is going to have, uh, or need that ob, that particular obligation, especially if they're able to put homeownership into their, one of their site plans or part of their phase.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a question. My question is, um, overcrowded unit, and with the virus, how is that going to impact that is on that waiting, because you may have a unit where someone needs to be quarantined, and they've been on the transfer list for the last, for years, are we going to deal with that?
An individual that's been on, many, as I showed at the oversight here, and a lot of our, our issue with transfers.
Problem before you came here, that you have overcrowded units, and prior to people having lawsuits and closing of the waiting list, people that were in overcrowded units due to medical were being transferred. However, at this present time, they are not being transferred, they're still on hold.
Okay, so I'm trying, I'm trying to really
The next time we meet, just give us a list of, for a property, how many people in transfer list?
Okay.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Council? Um, yeah, there's, well, still a problem with the ranch, and I know we really can't do anything now because of not being in the building, but I would recommend that when we go back in that building, that we retrain, uh, people on that new, uh, system that we're on now. And I got two phone calls while we were in session, I didn't want to be rude, but I got them quickly. Uh, the judiciary is complaining that they're saying, because of the virus thing and they're being seniors, that their building is not being cleaned as it should be, and it was one elderly lady, I really couldn't understand her, but I know she's in a senior building on the corridor of M Street, the southeast side, she says that the, the building, it's a senior building, but they're still having traffic come through there. The residents are not, the residents are staying in their units, but they're still having a large volume of visitors in that building when they want to try and get that to stop.
Okay, so Commissioner Council, I heard, um, what the commissioners were talking about in terms of visitors, so we're going to move in a different direction in terms of stopping that
Commissioner Garrett, that's why I think it would be great that if you allow residents that live throughout your public housing communities to, to, uh, send you their picture, because this is why I'm saying, I was shocked that the Hill ran called me, because apparently DCHA have men in white suits looking like aliens all over the place, and that's when I found out that we had contractors that are going in buildings and they are, they're cleaning outside the surface of building.
Yeah, they're, they're, those are the contractors that are coming in on the weekends for us doing the deep clean every weekend. So, um, we are cleaning, we are cleaning the buildings, um, and the PMO staff during the week are doing, um, at least I said earlier, at least three cleanings per day of the common areas and common spaces, um, within the, within the
Okay, so I think we have time for one last question.
Can I, I, can I get a question in?
Sure, Bill?
I didn't realize we were on a, I didn't realize we were on a, uh, Hard Stop three.
I have a Hard Stop at three.
Uh, no, and I, I don't, I don't think anybody knew that, um, could I, uh, that's good, I, I'd sent out a, I, I, Mr. Garrett, can you give us an update on sort of what you're seeing, uh, how, from a, from a, from a perspective of all these development deals that we have and all this stuff, and I, you know, you know, I, I called you, uh, you sent out an email to the whole board, a couple of people chimed in, um, the sense I got from your email was that, you know, there was no concerns, that we should, you know, no time to retreat, let's charge forward. Um, have you, um, has your opinion changed at all about being in a more defensive position? Uh, given the incredible uncertainty that's going on out of the marketplace right now? Maybe tapping the brakes on some of these deals that are going to really expose us to some, uh, some requirements from some other people to perform?
Um, well, Commissioner Slaver, as a, as a true professional that I am, um, what, what I'm seeing, I'm Well, Commissioner Slover, as a true professional that I am, what I'm seeing, I'm talking to people, I'm having conversations and I'm talking to my team especially, because we're not ignoring the situation out there by any stretch of the imagination. We're paying closer attention to it. We know that there are going to be some changes and there are definitely going to be some shifts. So we are not, you know, walking through any, we're not walking blindly. That's what I should say. We're paying attention to what our deals look like and what our deals should look like in the future based on what the market is saying. I've talked to people, because I do have the ability to talk to other professionals in the industry, not only from the housing authority side, but also on the financial side. I had a conversation with Wells Fargo just yesterday in reference to what they were actually seeing from a marketplace. So we're keeping a close eye on exactly how we're moving forward. We're not going to take this housing authority or this agency down a bad path. My team is here to support the residents, that is, to be very, very mindful of what our situations are. So I want to assure you that we're not taking this lightly at all. We know that there is, and it's also ever-changing, as you know, like the stock market. You're either a bull or you're a bear. You're buying, you're buying low and some people are taking advantage of this particular opportunity on the market. So we're looking at it from the same standpoint. I believe Central, also Darrell, they have contacts, they've been making inroads. And we've been having clear, open discussion about steps that we should be taking.
Okay, so this document that I asked, Neil, I asked you to review this, I tried to get it into the Dev Mod meeting, this document about the analysis for leasing back 1133 North Capital as part of this redevelopment deal? My read on this document is that we're spending $9 million more than we need to, to stay in that space. That's really concerning to me. Also, the document.
Are you videoing?
Also, this document, you know, you're, you're estimating that we're going to spend $1 million in CapEx to stay in the building for four years. That's $2 a square foot per year. That seems like a number that's misguided. Your comps set are all Class A buildings in the CBD, 90,000 square foot and plus? So I really need someone, Neil, I'm not sure if you have a chance to read this?
I have not, but I promise you, I will.
Really need someone to explain to me how in the world it's a good decision to lease back our building at $31 a square foot in the market that we're in today?
So I, so I know there are lots of variables. My apologies, Commissioner, for not reading it yet, but I've been dealing with the fallout of COVID-19. But I promised you before our next meeting, I would analyze it myself and see what conclusions I come to.
This is, this is a result of the fallout of COVID-19. This is the kind of stuff that concerns me as a board member.
This is the, this is the result of an action taken by this board earlier this year that you didn't agree with. So, you know, you didn't support. So it doesn't mean that I drop everything and read your analysis. I will get to your analysis sometime.
Not my analysis, it's the authorities. It's not my analysis, Neil, it's the authorities.
The authorities' analysis, absolutely, absolutely. So, but before our next Dev Mod meeting, which is in May, I promise you, I will go through it line by line and give you my feedback on it.
You made the promise, you made that promise a week ago, so I mean, look, this is $9 million we should not be spending.
I am pretty, I have a lot of confidence in the leadership of DC Housing Authority and its development team. I have worked in the past with one of those team members who has worked on much more complex deals than the 1133 deals. He knows comps.
You might want to have read this before you say that. You might want to have read this before you say.
I didn't interrupt you, I didn't interrupt you until you have one opinion on the analysis. I would, I'm going to review their analysis and I may agree with your opinion, but I haven't done that as yet. But until that time, I'm going to reserve judgment.
So it'd be great if Central, if you could sort of weigh in and maybe give me your feedback on this in writing. I doubt you did this, but I'd love to see your feedback on why my analysis that we're overpaying my $9 million is inaccurate.
So I just want to say one thing before we end this meeting. So you risk, you know, I haven't seen the analysis, Commissioner Slover, I haven't looked at the analysis, but I don't want every board meeting that we litigate 1133.
We're not relitigating and I don't believe it's signed yet.
In the interest of moving beyond 1133, which we must do someday, right? I will read the analysis and will give you my feedback. You have my commitment on that.
I don't want to wait a month, so it'd be great if you could do it sooner.
As early as possible, but you know, I am trying to deal with people who are looking for shelter, who are looking for services, who have no place to shower, have no place to get food. So that's where my focus is right now. And so I apologize if I can't get to it faster, but quite frankly, it's not my top priority right now. So with that said, we're going to conclude this meeting. Thank you guys all for joining me. Joining the meeting, the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held by Webex on Wednesday, May 13, 2020 at 1:00 PM. For those who would like to send testimony in advance, please send it to board@dchousing.org. That's B-O-A-R-D at dchousing.org by May 10, 2020. Have a good day. Enjoy the rest of the week, everyone. So much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioners. Be safe.
You too.